Good evening, welcome to the July 22, 2019 City Council Meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Senator Masalafit will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Follow me, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, will you please take role?
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Protemse Starcid. Councilmember Vera Papa.
Here.
Councilmember Kelmick.
Here.
Councilmember Masalafit.
Here.
We have a corner.
Okay, approval of the agenda. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent calendar item?
Yes, I do. I'd like to pull Item F, Item H, and Item N.
City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor, we received three communications that were regarding various agenda items that were distributed to the City Council and made available to the public.
Thank you. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the agenda for not -- for items not pulled.
I'll move.
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries 5-0. And then we'll move to presentations. I'll call upon Chief Joe Miller for the two presentation items.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I just wanted to introduce two new officers as a result of Measure BB and the success of Measure BB and the support of the community and obviously the Council. I wanted to introduce two. I'm going to call up Kendra Owen first. Oh, you can clap, go ahead. Just say a few words about her. She came from the city of Los Alamitos. Thank you, City of Los Alamitos, for giving her to us. She grew up in the city of Idlewild. She graduated from Cal State Fullerton with a bachelor's degree in human services. And she graduated from Golden West Police Academy in 2009. One of the best academies out there, by the way, and I happen to go there. But previously worked at Los Alamitos Police Department. It has served as a patrol officer, detective, corporal, watch commander, field training officer, and first aid and CPR instructor. She's here with her husband, who is also a cop. If he could stand up. There he goes. In her free time, she enjoys visiting Lake Havasu, boating, hiking, camping, and other outdoor activities with her husband, stepdaughter, family, and friends. So we wanted to welcome her. She's a huge asset to the organization. I've known her for years before she came here. And it took a lot to get her here, but she's here. And I have a feeling she's going to do well for us for many years. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Gosh, I should have put her on the spot. Shawn Watkins. Shawn grew up in Bethany Beach, Delaware. He graduated from University of Delaware with a bachelor's in history. He served in the US Army for four years, active duty, and six years Army Reserve. He previously worked for the city of Los Alamitos. Thank you, Los Alamitos. And before that Culver City. Thank you, Culver City. And has served as a patrol officer, home liaison officer, range master, field training officer, and most importantly, a school resource officer. In his free time, he enjoys spending time with his wife and three children, taking his kids to the beach, weightlifting, golfing, and surfing. So, another opportunity to get somebody great. We have a -- to be perfectly honest, we have a lot of people that are interested to come into this great city. And we are -- we have the privilege to be able to pick the best. And we've got two great officers here today. So, welcome aboard.
Brian. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
And we're going to introduce new VIP? I'm going to call up Brian Gray. He'll introduce -- he's in charge of them.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmembers, Mayor, City Manager, I'd like to introduce you to the June Volunteers in Policing Academy graduates that are all here wearing gray shirts. I'm going to call them up one by one. Belinda Roman. Karen Rogers. Dan Dobler. Daniel Mahoney. Dwayne Lee. Grace Masterson. There we go. Lori Donovan. Lorna Binger. Lynn Alfieri. We have a married couple, Roger and Susan DeLazare. Spencer Lopez. Mr. Tom Murphy. Did I forget anybody? No, I think that's everybody. So these folks spent every Thursday with me, and all I could give them was donuts. But they volunteered their time to come in and learn about what we do and learn about what they're going to be doing. And we'd like to thank them all for being here.
Could you tell us what they do?
Absolutely. So, they had different topics that were broken down each day. And we had a bunch of guest presenters, but they learned about ethics, radio procedures, communications, chain of command, fleet management, parking and traffic control, uniform standards, driving a police vehicle, property and evidence, police procedures, records, and much, much more.
So we'll be seeing them out in the streets.
You may have already seen them. They're assigned to training officers, and they're already out there and working for us.
I have one other. How come he behind you has a white shirt on?
It's a long story.
Do they outrank him?
We stole him from Cypress.
So he had to bring his uniform with him because we couldn't get him a new one?
He's basically a lateral, and then he still had to go through the academy, but... Yeah, he's...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. We'll move on to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and entire city council and not to any individual member of the staff or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution.
Good evening so much, Mayor, City Council, staff, and the members of the public. It's a pleasure to be before you. I'm Seth Eker, resident of Old Town. I wanted to come and share with the council and the whole community the tremendous success that the Lions 75th Annual Fish Fry had in Eisenhower Park. It was probably the single most successful fish fry in terms of safety, attendance, waste management, organic recycling, and informing and entertaining the public. We could not do that event without the unwavering support of many city departments, if not all. And I would specifically call out the Recreation Department and Tim Kelsey, the Public Works Department, that ensured that the sprinklers would not go off this year, which was a huge win, thank you. Also, with Tim and Public Works additional coordination with our title sponsor, Republic Services, who continues to be engaged in community activities. Not only do they write a check, they actually sent Manny, who many of you know, to run a booth about Assembly Bill 1628 and organic recycling and how that affects our community. And I hope that all of council and those members of staff that we sent tickets to were able to attend. I was running around a lot, so I might not have seen you. And I just want to thank you all for attending. I know you were there, Mayor Moore, and I believe also Councilman Kelmick and others. Mike, I think you were there. I'm sure I may have missed someone, and I know Patrick attended, so thank you. I also wanted to highlight, beyond the physical plant and of course, planning for the permit itself, really, the police department did an exceptional job. And when I see all these VIPS and these new officers up here, that makes me feel great as a community member. Because I can tell you, we had what I think of as great community policing visible presence. We had the patrol officers who are on duty there. We had Victor and Bruno, who are assigned to the substation. We counted money securely and safely in the substation. So, our police department is doing a great job interacting. We had VIPS there, and we had VIPS just enjoying it. And we had others enjoying it. And Commander Conchak stopped by with his daughter. It was wonderful. And I just really want to thank all of the departments and the council for your continued support. And put it on your calendars for next year. The Fish Fry is always the third weekend in July. So we'll do '76 coming up, and it's also the 80th year right now for our club. So thank you very much, and marine safety as well. It's a -- the one thing is about marine safety, sometimes we battle on microphone because you're making announcements at the tower, and I'm making announcements in the band. And sometimes I wonder if we don't overlap. But thank you very much to you as well. I also wanted to invite and remind all of you that coming up on the 8th and 9th of September will be the next largest event for us, which is, I'm chairman of, the Arts and Crafts Fair, which will completely fill both sides of Eisenhower Park as we have done in the past. So we welcome you and invite you to that, and all the members of the public as well. SBTV did a great job showing up and recording. And overall, just to give you a kind of idea, we really reached, in our opinion, maximum density and strategic capacity in the fenced area this year. So, we're going to do some calculations and try to understand what's the actual revenue per square foot that we run in Eisenhower Park? Because it really was that dense. And maybe some of you experienced it on Saturday, and that is a quality problem. I'm also pleased to say, two local residents won opportunity drawing prizes. So, one new resident won the car, and a long-term resident won the Mac computer. So that's great. We have locals winning. And we appreciate that, and we appreciate all of your support. So, that's kind of my report from Lions and about the Fish Fry. We're certainly available for any questions. But again, just coming with a very grateful heart. And in terms of this morning, thank you for selecting that site for the dedication of the pier. We worked really hard, and I know staff did, to make it absolutely invisible, as if an event of 7,000 people over two days had been there.
Time is up.
And my -- oh, my time is up. Okay. So, there you go. Thanks for the clock backdrop today. It was appreciated.
Robert Goldberg, Seal Beach. Good evening. I'm going to try to speak to three items tonight, which will be my world record, if I make it. The first two are two of the items that were pulled. The first one was Item F, which is the switch out of our streetlights to LED. And I did submit several questions to staff regarding this. Specifically, under this proposal, we'll be making 20 years of payments to Southern California Edison. But the agreement that we're signing says that the applicant selects Option E in lieu of an upfront one-time payment of the replacement cost for the streetlights. So my question is, is what actually would be the upfront replacement cost if we were to pay it in a lump? The agreement also goes on to say that if we terminate the annual payments, then we're going to owe the remainder plus an interest rate of 7.9%. So I've got a fear that we're probably paying 7.9% essentially on a loan from Southern California Edison. So, what would be the replacement cost upfront? And what is the interest rate we're paying on the, essentially, on the loan? Okay. Second item, which is Item H, which is the engineering and inspection on-call agreements. And I think the concept here is very good. Let me read my question for the sake of time. This proposal provides the city with multiple professional firms with overlapping engineering expertise. While each has provided a fee proposal, these are primarily tables of hourly labor rates for a broad range of possible staff who could be assigned on any given project. While staff has reviewed each firm's labor rates and found them to be consistent with industry standards, the actual cost to complete a given task or project will be highly dependent on the firm's assessment of the total hours required and who among their staff will be assigned to do the work. This discretionary assessment could reasonably be expected to create a wide range of cost estimates if multiple firms were asked to price a given task or project. In future years, this range would be expected to widen, as some firms have aggressive annual cost increases, such as the Itris firm is going to go up 4.5% a year versus others that have no increases at all. So my question here is really one of procedure. To obtain best pricing, obviously, we've got the best firms now, and that's great. But to obtain best pricing seems to me would require another step. And that would be to send a given proposal or task to multiple firms within each of those three categories, inspection and engineering, general engineering services or traffic services, those three different groups. So my question is, will the city send a given proposal to all of the firms within the relevant service category for pricing before selecting a firm to do the work? I know, you know, obviously, there's no law that requires that. But I think it would behoove us to do that, to the extent that we can, to get the best pricing among these competing firms. Okay. Lastly, I want to talk about two things that are related. One is the pier, and one is the sea level rise workshop that was held by the city and city contractor last Wednesday. The city has issued their sea level rise vulnerability assessment as part of their local coastal plan project. And that's downloadable. And I read the section about the pier, and it's very interesting. What it says in a nutshell is that the pier structure will likely be vulnerable to significant damage in any extreme event with any amount of sea level rise. In other words, it's at risk now. And secondly, the results of this study indicate that the vulnerability of the pier deck increases substantially with sea level rise scenarios of three feet or higher. Now, what does that three feet or higher mean? Well, that's a possible scenario for about 50 years from now, the year 2070, and who cares? Well, I'm not going to be around. I don't care. But the Coastal Commission cares. And the Coastal Commission staff cares. And looking at the scenarios that are 50 to 70 years down the road has led the coastal staff recently to recommend that a homeowner or property owner, I should say, on 17th Street will not be able to subdivide the property. At least, that's the staff's recommendation. And it's because of a three-foot to six-foot sea level rise 70 years down the road. So, what I would like to recommend is, I know now with the pier being opened, the next step will be...
Your time's almost up.
...will be looking at the restaurant that we at. Before we do that, before we spend those resources, we ask staff to do a curbside consult with Coastal regarding whether they'll even allow us to build a restaurant. Thank you.
Joyce Ross, Parque Old Town, Seal Beach, 1982. It wasn't a sea rise, it was a big waves. Hit everybody on Seaway. I lived there. And everybody had to move out because the water came into the house about this deep. So, it can happen anytime. And I just wanted to remind everybody that it took a long time to get it back together. So, it divided the pier in the middle. And there were two ladies that sat at that pier all day and raised the money with the fishing game to put that pier back together. Two ladies. So, also, I went to the closed session because now they are looking at salaries, benefits, healthcare. And I noticed that I went to Transparent California, which is on the website. And if you want to know what's going on with the city, they are -- a lot of cities do put up there what is happening in their city. But this city is three years behind. So if you can't come to the meeting, or you don't know how to look it up on the website, you can go to Transparent California. But they have not updated the website. So what do you do? And the other problem I have is these requests. They're not coming. They're not coming. And then when they come, they come with the wrong one. So, I requested back in June 24th. And my request was 1-9-2-7-3, 1-9-2-7-4. Well, what I got was 1-9-2-7-4 for $25,000 for some water that I'm not real sure of. But my request was for the $50,000 that went to Huntington Beach. And then my other request was for resettlement between the police chief and Amanda. So why can't we have that? So what I went back and did is sent another request on July 16th. And then on July 18th, it said I needed more time. You needed more time. The city needed more time. Well, from between June 24th until June 8th, July 18th, you had a whole lot of time. So my thing is, you just don't want to let the public know how many lawsuits have we had, how much money we paid. And I know it's a lot. And it's got to be open. There are other cities that are now, when requesting about what's going on, why are the police, what are the police reports, what are they doing? Other cities are providing. There's been even lawsuits to require the cities to open it up. So now, why do I have to wait that long of a time to get a request? Because like I requested for the contract that you put out for the city of Seal Beach Police Department, and I did get an email back that that's coming on August 1st. For sure? For sure? We can find out where they've been, what they've done? There was a police chief a year, years ago, that gave one. We knew where they were, what they were doing. Why are they hiding all these things? And I know there was a Public Records Act handbook by Richard Watson, the attorney here. And from January 1st, 2019. Well, everything has changed since January 20th, January 1st, 2019. Now, we have more transparency in cities, and it's time for this city to get on board. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, City Attorney Report?
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to the meeting this evening, the council met in closed session regarding the labor negotiations item that was on the posted agenda. All members of the council were present, and the council took no reportable action during that section, that session.
City Manager Report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just have one item tonight, but I don't want to steal the thunder of the council, so I'm going to be brief in my remarks about the ribbon-cutting ceremony this morning at the pier. And what an incredible turnout we had with a lot of special guests, which I'll let the five of you cover. But I did want to thank especially Patrick Gallegos, our Assistant City Manager, as well as Rebecca Baird, Dana Ingstrom, and Jennifer Robles. They were instrumental and integral in the planning, which was ongoing for several weeks. And what you saw this morning was truly all as a result of their efforts. So Patrick, Dana, Rebecca, and Jennifer, kudos to all of you, and thank you for all the work that you did to make it happen this morning. Thank you.
Thanks. Do you counsel comments? Councilmember Masalafit?
Well, I went to a couple of meetings this month, and one of them was mosquitoes. So here I am to remind you to dump those little plates that are under your pots, because that's where water collects, and that's where they lay their eggs. And all they need, they don't even need anything larger than a bottle cap to the water we drink. It's all they need to lay their eggs. And then we get bit, and then we might get West Nile virus. So far, there's only been one death in Southern California, one too many. There haven't been any other reports of West Nile virus in Orange County. That was on Thursday. By Friday, there was a report out that had big numbers in terms of West Nile virus, bird deaths, and people who are infected. So, that data will be coming out soon, and just pay attention. Trying to keep you alive, so you can vote for me. I'm not running again, it's okay. Went to a couple of water meetings. Quite interesting. Our water supply's in good shape. That's kind of good to hear after all that rain. Sanitation district is getting on and doing a lot of pickup and repairs and maintenance and a new building, a new administration building. They hope to maybe break ground at the beginning of the year sometime, and so that'll be changing. And I went to the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy meeting this afternoon, where we approved lots of millions for parks and... lots of millions for parks and projects that are all along the LA and San Gabriel River. There are lots of things going on there. If you see stuff in the paper about the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy, pay a little bit attention, maybe read a couple of paragraphs so you know what's going on in the neighborhood. That's all I have.
Thanks. Councilmember Vera Poplin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I attended the Local Coastal Program Workshop. The consultant really did a good job in this presentation, answered a lot of tough questions. The PowerPoint presentation was really informative, and all the boards that he had with the breakout, I thought was really good. Steve Fowler was there, really explained the process that the Coastal Commission is requiring us to go through, and it was, you know, very, very well attended. I think I counted over 50 people or so. So, it was a good turnout, even though we did have concerts in the park the same night, but I think it was a lot of information. And I believe that the PowerPoint presentation was made available to the, to the public, right? Mr. Fowler? It will be, it will be available, so. Over the weekend, I went to the Lions Club Fish Fry. I want to say, great job. Please pass that message on to you and your group. It was a great event. I brought some out-of-town guests on the one day, and they really got a good feel for the city in a different setting. We always go to the beach and stuff like that and walk down Main Street, but I think it's, it's really nice when you go to that event and you see so many local people working it, and, you know, even adjacent towns are, they're there, and you know them by name, and they're high-fiving you and shaking your hand, and not just because, you know, the council member, because we're all residents in part of the town, and all the people that come in town. It's really great to see all those people enjoying themselves. They had some great food and great bands, and it really was a great environment. I know the city and the police department worked with them in the chamber. They did a really good job. Very fun event. And then the pier ribbing, what can you say about that? It was a great event. I mean, I think it was probably beyond my expectations. Well-attended by, you know, the residents and, and a lot of elected officials. The, the end of the pier looked fabulous. People were wondering if they were going to have a dance show out there or something because there are all these nice tables out there. And, you know, the staff did a wonderful job, you know, at the pier, base of the pier. And, you know, I even heard our project manager talking to the elected officials about, you know, how the, the wood was placed, and where it was from, and all the details and the nitty-gritty of it. So, I think as a whole, the city should be proud of ourselves for what, you know, you guys did today. So, good job. Thank you.
Councilmember Kalman?
Yep. I also attended the Sea Rise Workshop, and, you know, from now on, this is what we as a society, at least coastal people, are going to be having to deal with, and it's important to just remain informed as other workshops come up, you know, come out and listen so that you won't go away with misinformation. That can be just as dangerous as, you know, as anything. So, you know, again, I was pleased to see the, the amount of folks that did show up, and, you know, thanks to Steve for putting it on, and to our consultants. At one point, it was kind of interesting because some of the residents were starting to get a little worked up and had to almost be reminded that, no, no, these people are our consultants, they're here to help us. They may be giving us bad news, but it's bad news that's coming from external sources. So, I was, I was glad, though, to see a, a good turnout. The pier opening today was really great. I mean, I also want to add my thanks to all the people and staff throughout City Hall that all worked very hard, obviously, to put on that event. It may have seen, seemed rather seamless, but when you think about all the logistics involved to getting the chairs and the podium and the tables and the food and everything out there and the transportation, I mean, it, it looked, you know, pretty professional, actually, and I was glad to be, be a part of that. We had Congressman Harley Ruda, we had State Senator Tom Umberg, State Assemblyman Tyler Deep, and Michelle Steele, who is our county supervisor, who is a resident of Surside, by the way. And I think, I think they were actually fairly impressed at not only the pier, but the effort that, you know, that, for the presentation and so forth. I wanted to also mention what I feel so far has been a great success with having our two local police officers, Victor and Bruno, who have, you know, they've just become kind of like locals now, and they're sort of everywhere around Old Town. They actually, the other night, made a rather substantial arrest with some folks that were going down in Old Town on Ocean trying doorknob, doorknobs. And, you know, they're off the street now. And of course, the benefit of that is, the word gets out, you know, that maybe Seal Beach isn't the best place to come and, you know, do burglaries or steal bikes or make illegal U-turns. Which has needed and has gotten some attention. They're on the boardwalk, they're on the pier, and of course, if you don't mind my mentioning the, the tobacco grant, the city received a $300-plus thousand grant from Philip Morris, I believe it was, to, for enforcement and education as it relates to tobacco. So, they were dealing with littering, they were dealing with, you know, being able to patrol, education and whatever, but at one point, I think we had seven officers patrolling Old Town. You know, that's almost like a police department. So, I'm really appreciative of the chief and the efforts, and as I said, Victor and Bruno, the two officers that are permanently assigned, I mean, they're great young men, and they're enjoying the duty, and I think that they're integrating themselves very nicely with, with the residents. And the last thing I want to mention, I want to thank whomever, because I don't really know where it came from, but I had the opportunity, courtesy of the US Navy, to go to San Diego and be put on a small twin-engine transport plane with no windows, and go out about 100 miles to sea and land on an aircraft carrier, tailhook and all, and spend that whole day and evening and spend the night on the carrier, and then the next day be launched off the carrier the same way that all of the fighter jets are. So, it was very educational. It really demonstrates, you know, what the Navy does for us, when you think about it, and you can, you can place a, a military airfield almost anywhere in the world with over 70 fighter jets that have various roles and, you know, protect our interests or take care of whatever business needs to be taken care of. So, again, to whomever, thank you.
Mayor Protem Sustarzak?
Good evening. I also attended the Local Coastal Program Workshop. Thank you, Steve, for, for your work on, and that and the consultant, too. I also attended the Fish Fry Sunday afternoon, and maximum density was, I couldn't even find a place to set my, my plate down, so I didn't actually stay very long, but it looked like a lot of people were enjoying, and so thank you to the Lions for that. I attended the College Park East Neighborhood Association's Fourth of July Bike Parade. They, they also had, sold hot dogs, but had to kind of forego their chili cook-off this year because of Health Department changes, so. But the, my grandchildren were in town, and they attended, too, so it was, it was a fun event. And then in the evening, I went over to the Joint Forces Training Base and got together with some of the people from Los Alamos and the, and the management of the base over there to kick off the fireworks over there. So, those were fun events. Let's see. I attended the pier grand opening this morning, also a, a water briefing down in Newport Beach put on by the Metropolitan Water Department and, and sponsored by Congressman Ruda. And let's see, what else? Oh, while I was at Heather Park in College Park East, there are, were trashcans that the Girl Scouts, we had them here, and they were in place in Heather Park, so that was exciting. I was like, oh, I know who made those. So, that was, that was really fun. Thank you to, to giving those to Heather Park. I also attended the installation of Major General Laura Jaeger as Chair, Chair, what's her name? Commander of the California National Guard 40th Infantry. She's the first female commander of a, an Army Division, so that was a, a lot of pomp, circumstance and fair, fanfare over there, and while the command was changed. So, that was very exciting, too, and, and thank you to the Joint Forces Training Base for letting us come and watch. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yesterday, I was at the Fish Fry and worked at the ticket booth for three hours. I can't remember a more crowded Fish Fry in the past four years I've been a Lion. It was a beautiful weekend here in Seal Beach, and I was happy to hear that the Fish Fry didn't cause any problems for the city. The Lions did a very good job keeping it organized and secure, and also the city, the different departments, the police, and the Recreation Department. I went to the annual meeting for JPIA last week, which is the authority that handles our insurance. They have many resources that can help, including training, seminars, legal advice, and other helpful resources. It was kind of a boring meeting where we got to vote in new people on the board, but it was interesting to see all the resources that they have available to the city. About a month ago, I attended the OCFA meeting. This is the Orange County Fire Authority. At the meeting, they announced a $4 million grant from Southern California Edison, and this money will be used to fund two helicopters meant to fight forest fires. So, that should help us this year in the, when there's forest fires. Councilmember Masalava and I were happy to see a new sign at the Seal Beach entrance right off the Seal Beach Boulevard and 405, near the Fire Station 48, and I would look forward to seeing the landscape improvements in that area as well. And I'd like to take a moment and thank the city one more time for putting together the pier reopening ceremony today. It was great to see all the elected officials in our area in attendance, and to have all the council members in attendance. There was a ribbon-cutting, lunch provided, and it was a beautiful day today. Also, I'd like to thank David Spitz one more time, who did a great job managing the project and keeping the council informed. Thanks. And there's no council items, so we'll move to consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion carries 5-0. And we'll move to item F. Can we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I'll turn this item over to Steve Mider, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Southern California Edison owns our streetlights, and the technology they use is a high-pressure sodium vapor technology. It's very reliable, but not very efficient as compared to LED. As such, cities throughout Southern California have been requesting to have their streetlights converted to LED-type lighting. Not only does it save money, but it helps them in their other goal, which is to reuse their carbon footprint. Equally, a lot of cities consider that equally important. We currently pay a flat rate of $160,000 for the power of the streetlights, and that's an annual cost, power the streetlights and also maintain them. So, there's two components to that. By converting to LED, we can reduce our costs by $33,000 annually. Now, the cost, Edison's going to bill back the agencies, such as this city, for the cost of the infrastructure to do that, which would equate to $18,000 over a 20-year period. That leaves a $15,000 net savings, and after 20 years, we gain the full $33,000 savings. That, and there's other benefits, I, there's more than just that. There's other benefits beyond cost, which I think should be talked about as well. This type of lighting, LED has really come a long way from a technology standpoint. There used to be kind of a harsh light. Now, they can really dial the light in. A lot of people didn't even notice our pier has been converted over to LED because we wanted that warm feel to it, and 10 years ago, you couldn't do that with LED. And a lot of agencies that jumped ahead with the first wave of technology were really not happy with the harsh light. That's been solved. That, that technology now has, you can literally pick your warmth you want. It also has an added technology where you can actually direct lighting. You can, if some people don't want spillover light in their bedroom window, so if someone says, hey, there's a spillover light, the, the technology we currently use, you have to put a shade up, you have to actually literally put a barrier. This type of technology, you can actually point the lighting. So, this has, this is another benefit. Let's see, it, it results in a, probably, I would think, a more clarity of light, too. So, it's a warmer light, it's an easier light to see things in. So, these are the, kind of the benefits beyond cost. Obviously, it's the cost savings. Now, I wanted to talk to the, the cost overall. So, over a 20-year period, we would save $660,000, of which, we would pay Edison $360,000 over that 20-year period, so a net savings of $300,000. Now, to qualify for this program, Edison made it very clear, to qualify for an LS1 Option E, which is the techno, the program called by Edison, customers must sign a Form 14-9-65 to qualify, with subjects the customer to a 20-year term. A one-time lump-sum payment option was not provided at that, it, it's not part of the form. So, this is not a requirement, this is an option. We, we don't have to move forward, we can stay with the program we have. So, this is, this is the form we must sign, we want to move forward with that program and gain a $15,000 savings with all the other benefits as well. And that concludes my report.
I pulled this because I just wasn't, I wasn't clear when I read it exactly because it talks about a payment option, but then one wasn't explained, so. And also, the form that was in there, which I don't, I'm forgetting the number right now, but it may be the one you were talking about, has a June 2015 date to 16, so I was just, I was just a little bit kind of confused. So, I, I was wondering if there was an option, and as to Dr. Goldberg's question, if, if we're paying 7.9%, if there was another option, so. Because it said, if you wanted to terminate at any time, you had to pay the present value, which was based on their rate of return. So, it was just, it was more, I, I mean, I realize it's a good thing in that it's, it won't be costing us anything, but I was just wondering
Yeah.
What our options were.
I, I don't, I don't believe there's an upfront cost option. I would have to go back and research that. This is not a mandatory program, this is an optional program. So, should we, should we decide if there's a concern about not wanting to move forward 10 years from now, then that would, obviously, they put all this cost in infrastructure, and they're going to want the repayment of it. But that would mean the option would be going back to high, high-pressure sodium, which costs more. So, I, it, yeah.
And actually, we're not actually going to be writing them a check every month. We will just be saving less
Right.
During the 20-year purchase period.
That's, that's exactly it, and that's how they, that's why they set it up. They know that cities, capital cost for cities can be challenging at times, especially for something like this. It's designed so the city can realize, the city can realize in an instant savings, and they can recover their capital cost, which is required, or they can stay with sodium, high-pressure sodium. That's, that's the kind of the options they lay out for jurisdictions.
And I also understand that as part of, I guess that's, I forget if it's for approval tonight, that if we go ahead with the refurbishment and that if we go ahead with the refurbishment and rehab of the Main Street, streetlights, that part of that will include converting to the LED bulbs.
Yeah, those, those will be, those will be converted. Just they'll be the same, pretty much the same quality of light that you're seeing on the pier.
Good.
Okay.
Any more comments?
Okay, then I'll move to approve item F.
I'll second.
Please vote. Carrie is five zero. Item H, can we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll call forward Iris Lee, our Deputy Public Works Director, for a brief presentation on this item. Iris?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, and City Manager Ingram. As a quick recap to the June 24 study session where Director Mider led the item for discussion, staff is recommending approval for on-call agreements to provide an additional project delivery mechanism to address the city's robust capital improvement and maintenance needs. On-call agreements will reduce the time associated with soliciting for vendors and executing a contract, which at times can take approximately four months, depending on the actual need. Each vendor will already be pre-qualified, have a contract, and insurance and paperwork already in place with pre-negotiated rates. On-calls can essentially be used for many disciplines. However, staff started out with issuing an RFP, Request for Proposal, for three different items: traffic transportation engineering, general engineering, and inspection services. The selection of these firms was based on qualifications, their availability, their experience, in-house disciplines amongst various other items. The contract term for each of these agreements is going to be three years, with an option to extend to additional one-year terms. The traffic transportation and inspection services contract will be in a not-to-exceed amount of $240,000 over the initial three-year term. And the general engineering would be $300,000 not-to-exceed for the initial three-year term. Very important to note, the approval of these agreements does not commit the city to any funding and does not guarantee work to any of the consultants that we are going to be bringing on board. So, for example, and very hypothetically speaking, an on-call consultant provides a proposal for this year's local street paving project for $1. The city is only if and when the city approves that work would a task order be issued. And then the city will be committing $1 of funding for that proposal. Again, very hypothetically speaking, it's not going to be a dollar. So this concludes my presentation. And I'm available for questions.
Questions?
Okay, thank you, Iris. I was just wondering more about the process here because there's, you know, there's like five engineering firms. So when it comes to selecting someone, then if we don't go out to bid, if we, how do we, do we pick based on availability, on whatever? And or do we do any kind of comparison to know? I mean, like Firm A may say, well, we think this will take 20 hours. And Firm B might think, you know, I can still see possibly some differences. So I was just wondering about the process.
Absolutely. So for a general engineering discipline, we actually chose small, medium, and large firms just to cover the gamut of the different types of projects that we do have. We have the conventional slurry seal projects all the way to something like Main Street or a pump station of some sort. So for something that's as simple and something that we have a really good grasp of what the design cost should be, we may ask maybe one or two of the smaller firms to provide a cost proposal, but we generally know how much it's going to be. Something that is on a larger scale, not something that we routinely do, we will probably ask for a few proposals from our on-calls for cost comparison purposes.
Okay, okay, thank you. I think that's, let's see if I had another. And our, just a question I had about the dates of the contracts. Will they be dated today? Or are they, okay, that was just, I was.
That was a mistake on our part. It should all be dated for today.
Sometimes it's just confusing for me because I'm like, wait, these are all over the place. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Verapapa?
I just had a few brief questions. I think you kind of clarified that these are the maximum amounts per contractor or firms, right?
Not to exceed, correct.
And it's my understanding that this is going to expedite your process in getting the work done in our city. So it's important to have these on-calls there so we can just do it in a snap, so to speak, and not, you know, come back and forth and go back and forth and stuff like that. So it is an expedited process for the city to use, right?
Absolutely.
And is it only one company that had an escalation cost? Or were there other companies that had escalation costs?
There were other companies as well.
Because, yeah, because I, you know, we've been experiencing the same thing, and we get this about the same amount of escalation cost. So that's something uncommon in the industry right now that I've noticed. So I have no other comments. Thank you.
Any other questions?
That was a very helpful comment. I'm glad to hear that. The expectations are similar throughout the industry.
Any more comments? Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve item H.
I second it. Please vote. Carrie is five zero. And item N, can we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll turn this item over to our Finance Director, Vicky Beetley.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, you have before you for consideration an agreement with Clear Source Financial Consulting to update the city's cost allocation plan and ultimately present us with a cost recovery or updated fee schedule. Just a little bit of background. The city has consistently updated the fee schedule each year by at least a CPI increase. And the fees were originally based upon a cost allocation plan that was done previously in 2012. So while we've been staying up pretty much with CPI for most of the costs in the city, what we have not done is ensured that we're charging the correct rates, compared comparatively speaking, for the way rates are going in the surrounding cities. What we also haven't done is determined whether or not there is some obsolete services for which we have fees that are no longer required. And so we haven't eliminated those from our fee schedule. And we also haven't ensured that we are charging fees consistent with our neighbors. So we might actually be providing free services. So what's going to happen is Clear Source is going to come in. It's a pretty robust process for the cost allocation plan. We'll establish basically time and materials expenditures. There likely will be some actual recording in increments of how much time staff is spending on some of the items. On others, they may actually already have some standards in the industry for providing such services as we do. So we might be able to use some benchmarks versus some actual time studies. Then what will happen is, for example, the city attorney provides services to all of the departments. And so the city attorney cost will be rolled in. You, a city council member, oversee contracts. So city council costs will be rolled in. And really what it is, it's a top-down process that includes all of the, all of the different divisions that touch a particular service delivery and ensuring all of those costs are in for full cost recovery. And as I have walked through these plans in the past, very likely what will happen is when the project is done, the cost allocation plan will be used then to establish new fees or new, the new basis for new fees. And it would not be a highly unusual situation for us to see some extremely large changes in the fees, which we're currently charging into new rates when we fully looked at everything that burdens the particular service that we're doing. Clear Source was selected. The city sent out a request for proposal to eight firms. Five actually were, made the top list. Staff evaluated some and had interviews with two finals, of which Will Dan was one of them. Will Dan is currently providing services to the city and Clear Source. And when the staff team met with both of those individual firms, it was very evident to us that there was, what I'd like to say, a personal desire by the Clear Source representatives to work in the city of Seal Beach and establish more of a long-term relationship because this is not really just something that is one and done. It's something that is ongoing. And then the work product that we'll get from Clear Source, with which we can then update our fee schedules, in my mind, is one of the best benefits because it's very, very labor-intensive for us now to update the fee schedule each year. It's sent out to the departments. The departments mark up their changes. And then Finance Department consolidates all those changes into the one big document that you guys saw in June. So it'd be really nice to be able to have a mechanism in which we don't have to go through all of that effort. And with that, I'm, the other thing I'd like to point out is the quote for Clear Source was just under, or just about 29,000. And we've added 10% roughly contingency for things that might come up, perhaps an additional meeting or something of the sort. So the contract before you is in a not-to-exceed amount of 32,300. And that is for all of the components of the study. With that, I, my presentation is concluded, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And we do have Jeanette Hahn here, who is a representative from Clear Source tonight, in case there is any questions.
Any questions?
Yep, I, I pulled this mostly trying to figure out the process. I was imagining, you know, maybe the building department taking this step and this step. I wasn't sure, you know, you talked about how long you spent on this and keeping track, if that sounds like it's something correct. So I wasn't sure. Also, would this impact, say, special event fees? Also, we're coming up on looking at sewer and water rates. And so I wondered if if all the time that staff spends on sewer and water, if that's included in this study, too.
So they're two very distinct and separate things. The Water and Sewer Ray is, is a project that we're already doing, requires a Proposition 218 process to go through. And so Public Works is handling those. Those both are ongoing. These are for all of the other fees in the city that we charge for the services, other than what is called, like, the Quimby fees, the park fees, the development impact fees. Those are completely different. So these are fee-for-service that is a cost recovery. And so every fee that's listed in the master schedule that you just adopted would be in consideration. So yes, special event permits, although we've raised them. Do we really know? Has it changed? Has the process changed? It could go down. You know, it's not just something where it's presumed that all the fees are going to go up. There are some efficiencies that we put into place, perhaps that we haven't been taken into consideration, but completely separate from water and sewer, completely separate from development impact. These are all just cost recovery.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Okay, I'll move to approve item N.
I'll second.
Please vote. Carrie is five zero. No public hearing, no unfinished business, new business. Item R, approval of the annual special taxes for Community Facilities District Number 2002-01 here on Point. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor. Again, I'll turn this item over to Vicky Beetley, our Finance Director, who's going to handle these next three items separately. Vicky?
So thank you, City Manager Ingram, Mayor, members of the council. So I'll, they'll all be considered separately, but they're all similar. So I'll talk about them just in general. So what happens each year is, for example, at our last meeting, we went through the landscape districts and those kinds of things where we talk about coming up with the annual costs for the assessment districts, similar process here. The difference is that these are already set in statute by, excuse me, they're set by the document that was originally issued for the creation of these CFDs. So we don't have to go through the public hearing process like we did in the other ones. So what happens is Will Dan asks the city staff for the proposed budget for the upcoming year. And then they go through a process and make sure that the fees are in line or the recommended charges are in line with the constraints that are set in each of the CFD specialized districts. And the process is actually quite simple because each year, we just look at what the costs were, what the projected increases are. And then we just give that information to Will Dan. Will Dan comes back and says, okay, based upon the information that you've given us, we're going to charge this much. In Heron Point, for example, there's 64 homes in there. So the annual budget is over the 64 homes. And in the staff report, you can see that the rates are determined by the actual square footage of the homes. And so when this is approved, we will provide this information back to Will Dan, who acts on our behalf to get the costs for the CFD on the property tax bill for each of the homeowners in Heron Point, for each of the property owners in Pacific Gateway, and for, there's the other one. Hang on.
Seal Beach Boulevard, Lamson.
Seal Beach and Lamson.
The Lamson, yeah, Lamson Assessment District. So that's kind of the process that we go through. There's an engineer's report. They run through the costs, make sure that all of what we're attempting to collect meets all of the requirements in each of the separate CFDs. And then we come to you. In this particular case, you can see in the staff report that the, the rates that are going to be placed on the property taxes range from about 6,500 all the way up to about 58,000. However, there's no undeveloped properties over in the Heron Point. So there's no one who'll be paying that. Most of the rates that'll be coming in there are listed in the first four classes from about 6,500 down to 5,500, depending on the square footage of those homes. And so I have concluded my presentation for Heron Point. If you have any questions. And there are some attachments for all of the calculations. And there are some attachments for what will be seen on the property tax bills.
Vicky, is that the same rate it was last year or roughly the same?
It's roughly the same. It's up just a tiny bit. I would, I say maybe about 2% or 3%. And one of the things I also, thank you for the question. One of the things I'd also like to remind the council is that we refinanced the Heron Point and the Pacific Gateways in 2015. So even though the rates are up slightly, they're still below what they, what the property owners were paying back before we did the refinancing.
So any other questions?
I'd like to move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Please vote.
I, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the voting screen. I mean, yes, yeah.
Carrie is five zero.
The screen didn't change. It didn't change.
I'll see a live meeting tab?
We'll move to S. Approval of the annual special taxes for Community Facilities District Number 2002-02, Seal Beach Boulevard, Lamson Avenue, Landscape Maintenance District. Is there a staff report?
So the information is still the same for the process and the practice. This is just an annual update to those rates. And on the first page of the staff report, you can see the special tax rates that are being presented are, most of them are the 928.99 or the 122.31 for all of the property owners that are in the Lamsons Community Facilities District area. And that's up, you know, on Lamson and Seal Beach Boulevard is the area where this covers.
Any questions on this one?
So move.
Second.
Please vote. Please vote.
Yes, I can vote.
You voted.
Carrie is five zero. We'll move on to T, approval of the annual special taxes for Community Facilities District Number 2005-01, Pacific Gateway Business Center.
Okay, and again, the same process. Will Dan has vetted all the information and, and made sure that everything follows. This one's a little bit different, because there's only 10 property owners in the Pacific Gateway area. And so, again, although the rates are going up comparatively to last year, they're still below what the property owners would have been paying before the refinance. And you can see on the second page of the staff report, depending on which area they fall in, it's either the $19,000 per acre or the, the $3,000 per acre. And there is a particular document in, in this one that actually shows the 10 parcels listed, and it's based upon the per-acre calculation, and you can see what the, what the 10 parcel owners will be paying on the property tax bill.
Any questions?
So move.
I'll second.
Please vote. Carrie is five zero. Tonight's meeting will be adjourned in memory of Richard Davies, a former Seal Beach Communications Foundation Board Member. Mr. Davies resigned in 2014 after serving on the board for 14 years. Richard Earl Dick Davies was born in 1930 in Omaha, Nebraska. He served a four-year tour of duty with the United States Navy as a radio man. After graduating from UCLA with a degree in electrical engineering, he worked in the aerospace and electronics industry for decades before retiring. He and his wife Susan moved to Leisure World, Seal Beach, in the mid-1990s, where he served as the Mutual Seven Golden Rain Foundation representative for five years. In 1996, he joined the Leisure World Video Producers Club, serving as club president, and was appointed to the Seal Beach Cable Communications Foundation, serving for 14 years. He was very active in hosting, producing, and volunteering for countless public access productions. Dick loved traveling, was an avid golfer, and thoroughly enjoyed many weekly card games with friends through the years. A devout Christian, his strong faith served him well throughout his life, and he was called home on June 16, 2019. Dick was a humble, caring, generous, and loving man, who is survived by four children, seven grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren, and will be greatly missed by all who loved him. On behalf of the City of Seal Beach, I send our condolences to his family and friends. And we'll adjourn the City Council in memory of Richard Davies to Monday, August 12, 2019, at 5:30 PM, to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you.